Okay, we're gonna call the 20 times report trustees meeting for January 27th, 2015 order. We'll stand and join us in St. Elam.
The religion is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing, the agenda is before us, is there any additions or deletions by fellow board members or staff?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to add under Administrator two, job description revisions.
Okay, the agenda then will stand up presented with the one addition. First order of business on the agenda is the sheriff's report. If anybody in the audience at this time has any issues they would like to address to the sheriff's representatives, you may do so at this time. Only thing we ask is you give your name and address to fiscal officer before you move. Anything? Okay. Bill, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay, we'll go to unfinished business, there's nothing new business, nothing, we'll go to the fiscal officer's report.
Thank you, Mr. President, first item up on the agenda is the fiscal office's request for resolution to authorize the payment of the pending warrants in amount of $205,301.24.
I will so move. Second, discussion, hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leano?
Yes.
Second item is a request for resolution to authorize the payment of the regular payroll in amount not to exceed $220,000.
Second. Second, any discussion, hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Leano?
Yes.
So officer number three is a request for resolution by the board to authorize the payment for the following amount of claims. It's my turn here.
So moved. Second, discussion, hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leano?
Yes.
So officer number four is the investment report. We kind of looked at the role that one from April back to the first merit of place. Well, first merit's tradition. It's been the only option there. So officer number five then, last item for fiscal office is the permanent budget requesting a resolution by the board to adopt it.
I will so move off fiscal officer number five. Second, discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Leano?
Yes.
I'll recruit the fiscal officer for today tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Flex, we'll go to administrator's report, Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you, item number one is a resolution to approve and authorize payment to IBI Group for design services to extend a roadway in the park and construct a new parking lot with bio-retention type stormwater facility in amount not to exceed $9,000 from fine zero one F zero two A.
I will so move. Second, discussion?
Yes, this is the civil engineering design phase. This is the obvious next step at our Schneider Park to have a design phase of a roadway and parking lot. We need that done to even apply for grants for a parking lot and roadway. It includes the site visits, the whole dimension plan, paving plan, all the site notes, the stormwater profile, the submission to the EPA, and it seems high, but it also is the check that needs to be sent to the EPA for the EPA plan with the notice of intent, it's all of the drawings, so that you can look at any grants for phase two of the park, including the parking lot.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Leano?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Item number two I added this evening to the agenda is to revise job descriptions for the highway superintendent and highway mechanic.
And I'll move adoption of Administrator number two. Second, discussion, Mrs. Campbell?
Yes, the only changes were the title of highway superintendent. Prior to that, it was not highway superintendent, so it was just cleaning up some very basic language, changing it back to highway superintendent.
Okay, those are two separate resolutions.
It's actually all in one, it's to revise job descriptions.
Any further discussion? None, roll call please.
Mr. Leano?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And that's the end of the administrative report.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell, we'll go to the fire departments.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, item number one is to authorize a purchase of five ice rescue suits from Samsol Company, amounting to some $3,700.
I will so move.
Second, any discussion?
Chief, just clarification, these are replacing old suits that...
Lieutenant Morton has been in charge of taking care in operations and he reacted on a pedatorium a few weeks ago. A lot of suits are leaking, we've tried to patch them up, I'm back out, and they're still leaking, so I'll sort them out. They're about 15 years old, so...
Now, will we just scrap those, what'll be done with...
Yeah, we'll probably, because, you know, I don't take a chance, and they're a little...
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Leano?
Yes.
Item number two is to authorize a purchase to Agennis hydraulic rescue tools, the auto stabilization equipment from Howl Rescue Systems, not to exceed $50,000.
I will so move.
Second, discussion?
Another point of clarification, this is for the new rescue, especially the Alpha rescue truck.
This is updating our rescue equipment, it's about 15, 17 years old, and when we did some studies on it, our current power rescue equipment, because of the titanium and the metals that are being used in new cars today, we're in a very difficult time cutting it, this part here will be a lot more lightweight and universal, the spreading and cutting power of those tools will double what we have now. So we go from almost 5,000 PSI pressure cutting to 10,000, so it'll really enhance, you know, what we do operationally from the extrication.
Any further discussion? None, roll call please.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leano?
Yes.
Item number three is to purchase payment of Striker cot, to improve, power pro cot from Striker A V S, not to exceed 72,500. I'll send her a 503.
Second, discussion?
Just to clarify on the board, we did purchase four of those last year with that grant, so we actually, we paid, we paid nothing for four of these, a year ago, it was that $40,000 grant that we received. So what this is gonna do with that new A V S vehicle that's gonna be delivered into this week.
And it's the automatic cot, right?
Powered, powered.
So it's powered and it helps from that...
Yeah, that's why, because of the BWC grant, it's for pat back injuries, so it's a power lift cot.
Also saved for the patients.
It's made for the patient, too.
Okay, further discussion, roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leano?
Yes.
And the last item is to purchase payment of two Lucas chest compression systems from Physio-Mechtronic, not to exceed 26,500.
I will so move.
Second, discussion? Chief, you want to clarify that?
We purchased actually two of those units last year, you know, we did a field test of the, you know, before I bought any additional ones, and with the feedback I've gotten from the medics out on the street, these things are just phenomenal. The perfusion rate as far as cardiac arrest patient, the pulseless, we went from about 30% was just doing manual CPR to almost a 60 to 65% increase in perfusion, getting that heart back beating, and we'll get to the hospital, so these things are just phenomenal, so we're excited to buy some more.
Chief, for the, for the Boy Scouts in the audience who I'm sure are learning CPR or know CPR, will you explain what these machines are and what they do?
Well, they take away from an average person or adult or child even doing CPR, so manually does CPR, it's a situation, scrap onto our patient, and actually does chest compressions, so we don't have to have, you know, individuals doing that, and it's very precise as far as the depth, and it's a consistent depth compression, and the rate it's giving to, from the time we initiate that, which takes about 30 seconds to put off a patient apply till, till we get into the emergency department, until the doctors decide, you know, at that point, do we still have wave of pulse, can we have a pulse? And so, it's a very, it's a very nice tool to have from a life-saving perspective, and it gives us an advantage of obviously to save the people's lives, and, you know, we've seen very good success with, in the past, it's been almost a year, and the year that people are ready to be purchased the first two, so, you know, we're real happy with the outcome and the responses that we receive from, from that so far with the patient care that we're giving them. We're using those probably unfortunately, you know, probably once or twice a week, we got one today, we use, you know, so, so they're, yeah, they're pretty good.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leano?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief, we're going to the rear department, Mr. Castino?
Chairman, item number one is the higher vice code section 505, point 10A, private for the board trustees of self property, in a private sale, if the board determines that the property is no longer needed, it's actually scrap metal, this resolution allows us to rid ourselves of scrap metal we no longer need, which is a settlement value of less than $2,500.
So moved.
Second, discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Leano?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Item number two is a letter from Stark County engineer Keith Bennett with our annual highway mileage certification. It stayed the same this year, we have not gained or lost any roadway, we're at 172.855 miles, the board needs to sign this so we hear certified.
Just for the sake of helping educate some of the Boy Scouts, this... 172.85 miles is one direction. So guys, there's two lanes out there, obviously, so we've got, we've got 10 or 11 guys that cover approximately 17 to 19...
One way or another.
Yeah, so essentially, so they get up pretty early when it comes time to make sure you're able to get to school on, school on time.
You may not appreciate that part.
No, it is.
So basically, the young guys are doing, learning, but I mean, one driver is doing...
They're averaging about 16 and a half miles each, right now, in one direction, so, when you're brown snow, you're usually doing that times four of clear roadway, so...
Kind of gives you more appreciation of our drivers.
We work a lot for our shift on Sunday and Monday, so...
So they work 24 hours.
About 24 hours. Wow, they got, got, they work harder.
Thanks, Joe.
You can go to the zoning report.
Gentlemen, item number one for tonight is to set a public hearing for February 10th, 2015, at 6:15, excuse me, at 6:15 PM, to hear the zoning amendment number 558 day 15.
I will so move.
February 10th?
Yeah.
Two weeks from now. I will, yeah, second, and that's second, Mr. Leano, thinking ahead here, how many people attended his only commission?
It was packed tall.
Oh, we had seats left over, we had plenty of seats left over, I think we had about 20 seats left after there were the... I mean, I believe we could probably go over here, we could look somewhere else, and, you know, if we have a problem like tonight, and then those individual trouble needing it, look at a larger site. We had enough, we had enough room at that, at the zoning commission meeting.
We had no company meeting here.
I think that the zoning commission held it, that was just specific.
What was the room, was it room capacity?
A room capacity is 85, that includes people sitting at the dais, so we'd have seating for 70 some odd people.
Well, the department heads will stay on that night.
They won't have a regular meeting.
I know.
What do you anticipate going on?
I, you know, you never know, because I know the chief, he will tolerate, I know it's too crowded.
Well, again, we'd have seating, we'd have seating for approximately 70 people in
the audience. And we had, we had room for, I get, you know, we'll probably be kind of on the bubble front.
I mean, would it, because that would suspend the...
I guess the question is, any place you go would be a lot of overkill, upgrade, to rent a spot at school that seats 300 people. Unless you've got a temporary speaker for non-adhesive residents to possibly, in the lobby or something like that.
Well, let's go ahead and schedule a meeting here, and I will call around and have some guys at the back of the business move. Could you get speakers for outside? Rob, could that work?
Rob Scormich can do anything, and he could set up speakers that would go into the hall.
Interesting, because a lot of them have speakers.
Well, people let people in the hall, yeah.
Can't have forward, definitely.
Well, then why should it be safe?
I mean, just be able to speak outside. The substance would follow.
That can vary about the same size.
It's up to the board, if you'd rather be safe than sorry, we can call the schools tomorrow and use the theater, doesn't matter if it looks like it's small, that way it's set, you don't have to move, cause confusion.
I personally would feel more comfortable if we err on the side of caution and have a packed hall of people standing in the hallway, because that'd be the exit of the...
Yeah, so we'll call the schools tomorrow, see where we can hold it, and then issue as soon as we say ASAP.
ASAP, you can check over, maybe the community center, I mean, they've got that sort of theater room that we...
Yeah, as long as they don't charge, I mean, because the school doesn't charge us.
Yeah. All circle back, but we're gonna go and schedule the meeting for the, for January 10th at 6:15 PM.
Yeah, we can place a location on the website.
And then, subject to change the location. Mr. Leano?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Thank you, item number two, we have a nuisance statement for motor vehicles on Fulton Drive Northwest.
I'll so move on zoning two A.
Second, discussion? Hearing none, these vehicles were, I take it, I know, I've heard that, they more licensed or they operable?
Hard to tell, I mean, they, they look like they could be driven, but they may need jump starter, or, yeah, we definitely need to work on that.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Leano?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Thank you, and item number three is to hire contractors, CRS contracting, at amount not to exceed $9,000 for demolition of property at 2928 Mount Flute Street.
So moved.
Little second, do we have any photos of this property?
We have them in the past, someone speak?
Manager? Hold on one second, are we moving? Yes, one second. Just want to come on in, just give your name and address for the fiscal officer, give your full name and address for the fiscal officer.
My name is Terry, B O B E A L L, 10,007 Schleywall Avenue, Hartville. Thank you for letting me speak, I entered into a buy-sell agreement with the present owner of that property, the Harpers, and he, I talked with a couple of the people here at the T V, the township, and told them I had every intention of tearing that building down, of tearing that property up, I don't mind either than anybody else does. I'd like the property with that idea in mind, I'm gonna build a storage buildings on that for my own personal use, I'd like your indulgence if you would please, my attorney, Jack Boggs, is trying to get clear title to the property, the owners seem to think that they had no leans against it, and they do have, they've got two of them, and as soon as those leans are cleared up, I have the intention to pursue the property, I've already made arrangements with the county for my permits that I need to tear it down, to destroy the safety system, abandon the wellups on the property, I know what I need to do there, obviously I can't do anything without title of property. I've also made arrangements with limestone excavating, which is right across the street from the property, or right on the corner from the property, to tear the building down and have them haul away. I'm asking for approximately a 30-day extension, one thing that you might do, it's not a question I don't want to start on a mark, I just can't, go ahead, deep to the property.
I mean, in the past...
And you folks are absolutely right, it's an absolute mess.
I think, I think...
It moves us to...
I think if he moves us to allow you to have that extension instead of spending taxpayer money that he didn't try to get paid for.
To be very honest with you, the figure that was thrown at me was approximately $10,000 worth, which would cost the township, I feel like I can get it done for less than that, and I have no intention to, actually, the day I take title to it, is the day they're starting, a suitable level permit, I'd like to get it cleaned up a bunch of units later.
I'm okay with it. Because I'm asking for a 30-day extension, hoping that they can just clean it up and again, is that length of time?
If it goes a few days over, it'd be patient living, if I give my word, I will make it up.
I'm okay with continuing to the 24th of February, which is approximately 30 days, that's our next board trustees meeting, and if...
Don't forget to guarantee weather.
Just come back at the next...
Just come back at the meeting and give us an update.
I'll be happy to do that.
Yeah, just feel like it's asking, you know, stay in touch with me, just stay in touch with me so we should keep updating on, on your progress.
Okay, I'll do that.
Mr. Veal, for some reason, should you be unable to attend on the evening of the 24th, just make sure you've got an update with Danny, that way he can provide, even at the meeting for the safety of official records.
Absolutely, we're assuming until one time, we really didn't get a lot of details, but as I said, the owners thought the date had clear title.
Right, actually, I talked to Mr. Harper today.
And they were pretty upset, they didn't realize that they had this debt, what it was, it was credit card debt, and somebody had filed leans against the property several years ago, in fact, in '07 and '08, and the Harpers were incredibly nice people, they're getting up in age, whether they forgot about it, and in fact, it may not even be their debt, they don't seem to think it is, and they didn't have an attorney at the time, go ahead, my attorney can take care of it for them, to get it cleared up, so that's kind of what we're at right now.
Do I certainly have no objection to the extension, Mr. Andrew?
Thank you very much.
That's it, the board has no objection, we'll continue until the 24th of February.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You can say whatever.
Okay, then we'll move on again.
Yes, sir, thanks very much.
Okay, we'll go to the parks.
Just a few announcements, gentlemen, first one is our pre-kindering camp will be kicking off on February 18th at the Diamond Community Room, it'll be open Wednesdays through April 25th, with the week of March 4th being excluded, because our teacher candidates from alone are on spring break, that is a very affordable program, and we're working with actual Ohio content standards at that level for kids to learn, so it's a new pilot program for us, we're kicking off in earnest in about five or six weeks. Number two is just an announcement about our Easter egg hunt, it's an annual community event, it'll be held Saturday, March 28th, times TBD, and more information in meetings to follow.
Can I go ahead and nominate ours, Easter egg?
That's about it, that's the vice president's desk. He's taller.
I assume the vice, you better vote us. We never heard of a short Easter.
First time forever.
It doesn't matter, you're sitting down. Okay, move to number three.
Number three, I've got a lot of inquiries about this one, so I'm excited to announce, we have got dates locked in for the supper market again this year, held at Schneider, we'll kick it off with a 12-truck, food truck roundup on Saturday, May 9th, between 2:00 and 7:00 PM, we'll wrap things up on Saturday, September 5th with the same, and in between, the first and third Mondays of each month, while the supper market at Schneider from 5:00 to 7:30, and we're already getting inquiries from not only folks that want to attend, but from trucks that want to come out and be a part of it, so the apps are in play, and we expect to be locking those in as the weeks unfold.
This is a training, you know, we go from, we go from trying to figure out how to squeeze in another farmer's market and make people drink from that fire hose, to kind of a market or something nobody else is doing around the area, so...
We stumbled upon it upon vacation, and we liked it, so we thought we'd give it a shot. That's all I have for parks tonight, gentlemen.
Okay, all the board directors, Snilak, we'll go to communications.
Thank you, I have one communications from Sally Effermoff that reads, "Dear Chief Snyder, on the night of December 21st, I called 911 as we were unable to stop the profuse bleeding on my husband's vein, I was truly frightened, your paramedics arrived quickly and I could not have been, and could not have been nicer or more considerate, they were both professional and kind, I've never experienced such an emergency, so didn't know what to expect, I could not have asked for better treatment, I just thought you should know, sincerely, Sally Effermoff."
Thank you, yeah, actually, it was totally youngest guy, so, I actually brought him to the office a little week ago, and talked to him about it, and thank you.
Who were the two for the record?
It was Ron, Ron D. Francisco and Ben McGee.
Oh, yeah.
That's the end of communications.
Now comes the portion, we'll assume that most people are here for public speaks, but before we go to that, I don't know if it would be, I'd like to ask the members from the Boy Scouts that are here present, if they want to, to introduce themselves, which troop, which troop are you from?
42.
Troop 42?
Trustee Leano is an Eagle Scout.
Troop one.
41, yes.
I'm from Troop one.
Oh, Troop one.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so if anybody in the audience this time has any questions or concerns they'd like to address the board with, you may do so at this time, just go ahead and feel free to stand up, there's one behind you. Okay, give your name and address for the fiscal officer, and there's speakers up there, so you can say anything.
My name is William Wagner, I own the property at 1857 Whipple Avenue Northwest, and also own the business Cardinal Glass and Mirror at the same address, and I guess I'm here to show my concerns about the property located at 1900 Whipple Avenue, which I've spoke to a couple people about, and basically here to reiterate, you know, our concerns of our property values, you know, many people around there, the carpenters, us, Paul Panicopoulos, several of us have put thousands and thousands of dollars into our properties, and, you know, to keep it appealing to our customers, and, you know, we're kind of getting feedback from our customers how bad this situation is across the street, because it's, as you well know, it's kind of like a junkyard across there, and I understand there was a judgment against the property owner, I'm not sure when that was, though, give Mr. Williams a try.
Yeah, it is, I can tell you, I'm sorry, go ahead, why don't you finish it now?
No, that's all right, I understand there was a judgment against the property owner, and I was wondering, with that judgment, I... And I was wondering, with that judgment, I understand there's a fine, a monthly fine. And I was wondering, is that, does the judgment only entail a fine? Or does it actually have an ending? You know? You know, we could fine him for 50 years. So I guess the question is, is there an actual ending in sight of, what do you do if they don't react with a fine?
Well, that's what we're doing now. That's what we're trying to work through. That, we have kind of a three-pronged approach going right now. And the first part of it is the fine. It's $100 a day. And at the end of January, we're going to seek to have that portion put into what's called a judgment lien. That'll be on the tax records. Hoping that that'll give us some leverage. And let me maybe back up a little bit and tell you that it's an unfortunate situation over there. We've said to the folks that have come before, we certainly empathize with you. 99 times out of 100 in situations like this, we get to a resolution much quicker because I, I have to be careful how I say this, but because there's some logic that's able to be extracted from the situation that we haven't been able to get to in this particular situation. Okay? We haven't gotten close to that. So we've had to go this far, unfortunately. We will do that at the end of this month, and it'll be $100 a day from about October 1st. So by my rough math, you're looking at about a $12,000 judgment. That's part A. Part B is, last week, I reached out again to this particular property owner and did make contact, which is good. At least there's some dialogue. And we will have a meeting, Denny, myself, and the property owner. It'll probably be sometime around February 9th. We're still trying to firm up a date. But at that point in time, we'll already have started the wheels turning with regard to this rather large and significant judgment against this property. So hopefully, something good comes of that meeting. I can't guarantee that it will, but hopefully, something does. The third and final phase of this is that Denny and I, this winter, one of the things that we've undertaken to do is, throughout the zoning code, as things have come up, we've tried to change some of the zoning text to deal with them. We have some language that we will be presenting in February, if I'm correct, to the zoning commission that we hope is going to address this specific situation from a different angle. Obviously, there's some violations out there that we've already proven in court, that we've already gotten this judgment against. What we would like is what you all would like. And that is some way that, quite frankly, probably doesn't exist in the zoning code as it reads today, but hopefully will after we get these amendments through to alleviate or help that situation even further. So that's kind of the three things that we're working on at this point. And we're hopeful, too. I'm hopeful that the meeting will go better than I even anticipate, but I will...
So I appreciate that. And I think what we're looking for is that we at least have a timeframe.
Sure.
Because this has been going on for a long time.
And here's what I can tell you on the timeframe. With regard to the lien, which seems great, if that ends up in a foreclosure process, you're looking at, that could be a year, two years in court.
It was already in a foreclosure process, I assume.
Well, no, that's not our lien. That was a different.
A different, yes.
A different lien, it was in a foreclosure process. And you saw how long that takes. That went on for quite a while.
So because of your lien, it could initiate another foreclosure?
Yeah, we don't have the right to jump on the backs of any other that have been filed before us. So we have to start our own action and go about it that way. So that could take quite a while. The zoning text, Denny, would you take them through the timeline on how that gets amended?
Right. Basically, what will happen is the zoning text will go in. Understand, we also follow the Highway Revised Code with the process and the timeframe in order to make certain that everything isn't to be found in error. And actually, this, what we're proposing here, our language is not known very much around the state. This is something relatively new we're going to go for. But basically, we'll go to the zoning commission at their February 18th meeting. And what happened there is we proposed the text. The zoning commission members will review that text, modify it if they wish or whatever. And then it gets sent to the Stark County Regional Planning Commission, who reviews all of our possible text amendments for their recommendations. It will then come back to the zoning commission in April, at which time they will go through the wording one more time and possibly modify or whatever with whatever the regional planetration says. They will make a decision at that hearing. Obviously, we're hoping that that decision is in favor of what we're proposing to do. What happens after that is kind of what started here this evening in my report is that it would then come to our board of trustees to set a public hearing. That public hearing would then, in all probability, be, I guess, on the, around April 14th. At that point in time, the board members hear that and either approve, modify, or deny the recommendation. And once again, we're hoping that they're going to approve it. Little plug there. But, you know, they approve that modification. It would then take 30 days after that for it to become law and act as part of our zoning resolution. So we're looking at about the middle of May. And that's the ORC process that we follow very carefully because it works. And it's time-consuming, but it works. It makes certain there's plenty of public hearings for people to discuss the issues and then step forward. And that's the process for that.
And I would just add that along the way, we're going to continue the lines of dialogue with this property owner in the hopes that some of these things that we're doing might generate a little additional cooperation. That's certainly the hope. And obviously, I know that hasn't been successful to this point, but I'm going to, I'm going to keep trying.
So even with the whatever foreclosure or whatever, you know, that has to do with the actual property or the building.
Right.
But there's no other, whatever violations that take care of just the things that are on the property?
Really?
Where you could actually physically go in there and say, "Hey, you have 30 days to clean this out."
Here's what we run into.
We're picking it up.
Here's what we run into all the time in zoning matters. And I know it's frustrating for you. And I know it's hard to even understand that there's this protection out there for situations like this. But the truth of the matter is, if those things would ever be deemed to have value, and we just went on someone's property and took them, I'd just expose my board to a whale of lawsuit. And that's something that I'm here to prevent, not to cause.
But what is a vehicle? It's a trailer with black tires and...
The vehicle, the vehicle we absolutely have, that's what we have the judgment for, is the vehicle.
I see.
The things that are tarped and kind of...
Right.
We don't have anything that exists.
I understand those need more careful.
Right. And here would be like, well, I probably will ask you this off the record, but I have a question about the vehicle because I'm concerned, if it should leave, what happens to what's in it? So the vehicle may be, it may be, although we don't want it on the property, you know, but we also don't want everything that's in it now in the parking lot.
Well, I guess I'm here to, you know, I'm glad you appreciate our property.
You certainly do.
You know, I guess that's why I'm here to make sure you understand where we're coming from. And it feels good that you appreciate our problem and are working toward some kind of solution anyway. So, thank you.
From this board's perspective, if there was anything that we can do without, that would not subject the township to legal expenses, we would have done it already because we have a tolerance level about that far for issues like this. But unfortunately, we're stuck between the law and how we actually feel. We're actually in a situation where we're in the same shoes as you. We're just as frustrated because we're not being able to get anything done quick, you know, quick enough for you folks. Because I don't think there's anybody sitting up here who's willing to say that that doesn't need to be corrected over there.
And that's certainly why those lines of communication are open. Because our best-case scenario is that we get something done there. That this particular property owner just says, "Enough is enough. I'm tired of being in court. I'm tired of looking at, you know, five-figure judgments hanging over my head. I'm tired, I'm just going to take care..." That's our best-case scenario for all of us. I understand. I do understand exactly what you're saying. Thank you. Sure.
My name is David Bianchi. I'm the president of Holly Hills Baseball in Plain Township, 1039 Street Northeast. I want to, first of all, thank the trustees and administration for allowing us over the years to, so courtesy of us, for using the halls, making arrangements for anything else we need. I'm joined here by Fred McCray. Fred's the new president of Holly Hills, I mean, of Plain Local Softball. And we have been two separate entities for quite a long time, actually. It's what we overdue. So we got together as our boards, and we chose to unite for the betterment of the community because we've been pulling at each other one way or another with both of us having baseball programs and softball programs. So we are going to handle the baseball, they're going to handle the softball, and we're going to be under the same umbrella. So I would like to recognize Fred McCray, he's the new president, and he and I, we've spoken, and we have some ideas of some things we'd like to do. Back in the day, when I was younger, back in the 60s, we used to have a parade from downtown Canton with the southeast, southwest, northeast, northwest, with all the kids who played baseball. And we would have a parade from downtown Canton to one of the baseball fields within the northeast end. And it's something I remember, and it's something I have pictures of, and I've never forgot. And it's something that's been on my mind for a long time to do this in unison with the softball program and along with our challenger program, which are handicapped kids. We probably have about 167 of them. Last year, in our group, we had about 500 kids. And I don't know how many Fred's have, but I know that with the girls, it's probably in the hundreds, maybe 120, 150, it depends. So what we would like is, we would like from the Plain Township Board, the permission, your permission, your approval, your cooperation, any input, any suggestions, any assistance. And we would like to have a parade on May 2nd, on Saturday, starting probably 8 o'clock, from rather the high school to Bar School Field.
A dating end.
Or from, I'm sorry, or from the stadium, the Glen Oaks Stadium, TDs. Well, we'll discuss that tomorrow, trying to figure out, because we have, obviously, Crow's Roads, we have to have the sheriff involved, and some other things. What I would ask from you is, I would appreciate if there were any fees waived, fees involving setting up barricades and things like that, that they'd be waived because we're a nonprofit, obviously. We're community-supported, and it's something I would appreciate. I believe tomorrow morning I have a meeting with Joe, correct?
Yes.
You have a meeting with Joe, myself, and then the fire chief and lieutenant's firm.
We're paying for this. It's something, like I said, in my mind, it's been all on my mind. And I kind of want to leave the earth with something I remember as when I started when I was young. So we'd like to, for its approval, maybe tonight or tomorrow, we could get that okay from you to waive those costs. Because I think with setting up everything, it's going to run $300, $300 and some dollars. Thank you.
Well, we'll discuss the route tomorrow because we do have concerns with the fire station from Schneider. So we can, that's what we're going to handle in our meeting tomorrow, is the logistics. And that's what we do day in and day out with any marathon or race or any request like that, is we handle that with this team that's meeting tomorrow. As far as waiving any fees, that's up to the board. Because typically, what is paid is overtime for Joe's guy. It's the overtime rates for the guys setting up the... There's not a permit for a race. There's no permit, there's no... But it's overtime from the sheriff's office. It's overtime from Joe's office, and I don't know if fires involved. Probably not, since it's a parade. So we can't waive the sheriff's, you know?
Do you mean that there is reserved deputies or anything like that for something like that?
Please, it's the board, that'll actually be a side job, right? So it won't be an overtime rate.
How long for this? I mean, just sitting down, talking through the logistics, identifying any associated costs, concerns that...
Then we can bring it back to board.
...by our next meeting at the February 10th. I mean, that still gives...
All right, please second that.
Yeah, I'm saying for our meeting.
Yeah.
If we have a final answer by our meeting at February 10th, I mean, does that, that shouldn't impede the ability to still pull that off.
Yeah.
And I think, quite frankly, if we can contact each of us to let us know what come from that, if there's need for any type of special...
Yeah. The difference is, they are nonprofits, so...
And personally, I might just give you my opinion, and I wouldn't have a problem waiving any powers of social assistance. Neither could you.
But, you know, that's something, too, I want to talk about the air about.
So what do you do about this, about business?
Yeah.
Business outreach, we think? We may say technically, we're offset.
I think we need to have an idea of what it is.
Yes.
And then we can make that decision. Because I'm concerned about your, obviously, your liability if you're going to put taxpayer dollars at work here.
Yeah.
But if we get an idea of what it is, maybe we go to three or four business partners and say, "Do you think you can handle one?"
Yeah, we'll donate the fees.
We'll figure something out.
Yeah, we'll, yeah.
Since you're still not neutral to you guys and the effort, because I just think there's really nothing to praise in the township since it's...
Some spice and texture.
Some spice and denny, also, and that would be...
And we use the money that we raise privately. Those...
That was all private.
All sponsorship dollars.
That was all fundraised.
Right.
Yeah, so we'll figure something out.
Did you say you'd get back with me what you said?
Yeah, our next meeting. Yeah, once we get some ideas.
And once we get the cost, yeah, we'll talk tomorrow. We'll figure out the cost, and we'll solicit some, a sponsorship.
Thank you.
We'll get, we'll get it over here. You guys, so what you doing?
How long, David? How many years you got this? Ask my wife, how's that? 15.
Well, but that's Plain Local. That doesn't include going back in the mighty lights and everything else inside the city. I mean, you've been doing it for decades.
Like I said, it's something that I think it gets a big under. I just wanted to introduce myself to everybody. Hi. My name is Fred McCray. I'm with Plain Local Girls Softball Association. We're going to change things a little bit. I'm very proud to be a part of everything on the extract route. This is all new for me. We're looking forward to working with you, you know, whatever's happening in the past. That's facts. It cannot be. We have to go for the future. And that's our plan. Other than all the things that's been going on, I think we're in a started great relationship. And I think that, you know, participating will work greatly for our girls and boys in Plain Local. I thank you all for any participation, any help. Me and this guy right here, we already know each other.
I would also say it's been a pleasure to work with you so far. We've had a great relationship, and we look forward to continuing that over the years.
Good thing. Come on, me.
We'll talk later. No, yes. I couldn't resist, I'm sorry, David. Yes, David, we love you, too.
Just give your compliments.
Take, you could, naturally, to take it back.
Next meeting, we'll see what you have.
Tomato, tomato, David. Thanks. No, they're great to work with, and we look forward to continuing our relationship. Does anybody else wish to address the board? Mr. Rosé.
Good to see you.
Would like to say, good to see you. It's been a long time. Come back more often. Okay, if there's no further concerns of citizens, we will go to... First one, concerns of trustees. Okay, we'll go to the Concerns of Fiscal Officer. Okay, we'll go to the Prolego Minutes. And also move on that for January 13th, 2015. Second those. Any discussion? Gary, don't roll.
Mr. Lino?[1754.62]
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. DeBasis?
Yes.
There is a need for executive session. So I'll make the following motion, be heard by a resolved by the Plain Township Board Trustees, Stark County Council, and the township at 6:50 PM from this regular meeting of January 27th, 2015, is authorized under Ohio Revised Code 121222G to the purposes and consideration of 1b employment of a public employer official, f compensation of a public employer official, and 3 conference with the law director or other retained counsel concerning defendant or any important action. Any discussion? Hearing none, no calls. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. DeBasis?
Yes.